I don't want whatever Greg has. Actually, the "furping," was it? Is that what you call that?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, I would carry that with you too.
There was a strong overshare. It was a strong overshare for the council member. Remember, we might be recording at the moment right now because it is 6:30, so let's not.
Oh, we all saw. All right, I call the City of Ferndale Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, May 18th, to order at 6:31. Kyle, can I have a roll call? Attendants?
Commissioner Hagfors?
Here.
Commissioner Azar does not seem to be here at the moment. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Foster?
Here.
Commissioner Schulter?
Here.
Commissioner Akers?
Here.
Commissioner Brazen?
And Councilman Pollocka?
Here.
And Brittany, Commissioner Haskins, thank you. Let us know that she would be absent for the next few meetings due to maternity leave. And Azar is not currently here, but might just be late for the meeting.
I would move to excuse the absence of Commissioner Haskins.
Second.
Ask you, Azar, or?
Um, I will... Did we know Kristin? Were we expecting Kristin not to be?
Well, she's not here currently, so I'm not sure.
Uh, sure. And Commissioner Azar, though she may.
You can always accept her back into the... That is a motion by Baker?
Up and second.
Second from Commissioner Hagfors. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda this evening, we have one item of old business, the site plan approval for 1200 West Nine Mile, multifamily development, and some discussion administrative items. Any questions or requests for amendments to the agenda?
I would move that... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kyle.
Yeah, through the chair, could we add to the administrative items the introduction of our new CED director? I neglected to include that.
I wrote CBD director. I would move that we approve the agenda with the addition of item number 9B, the introduction of our new CED director.
Walter? Walter, seconds.
Thank you. That is a motion by Baker to approve the agenda with the addition of the introduction. Motion by Baker, second by Schulter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us to approval of the minutes from our April 27th Planning Commission special meeting. Were there any comments or edits for the minutes from April 27th?
Through the chair.
Yes.
One comment I would make about the minutes. I would like to see some more detail again about the conversations that we have on projects. It was brought up during the BZA meeting that the minutes really aren't helpful at all. So if we know that some of these items are going to be either coming back or being used for additional commission discussions, the minutes really need to be a little more detailed.
And thank you for taking the time to, as we're missing some assistance on the commission to do the minutes. I think the previous minutes, I think, were very detailed and now we're getting back. So appreciate all the help from staff in this moment. Thank you for the comments on them. I think the intention behind our decisions is important. Would you like to make any additions to the minutes for this evening? Or would you like to table the minutes for additional or?
Maybe... I guess in this particular instance, I would be okay approving the minutes as we're talking about another item that's already on them tonight. But maybe in the future, just again, if there's something that's a particular item that's either tabled or set off for a future meeting, making sure that part's a little more detailed. But I would be okay approving them as written tonight.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Yep. So I will motion to approve the minutes as written for the April 27th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
That was a motion by Commissioner Hagfors, and I believe the second was from... Oh, okay. Okay. Akers and Brazen sound very similar, so this might be confusing. Your voices sound familiar. All right, thank you. All those in favor of approval of April 27th's minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, so now we have a moment for a call to audience. This is the opportunity for anyone in the public that wishes to speak on anything not on our agenda for this evening. Again, the agenda this evening does have a site plan approval for 1200 West Nine Mile Road, which is a multifamily development. And then we will have some discussion about potential ordinance amendments. But there is nothing... In terms of those ordinance amendments, we are not going to make any decisions on those this evening. It's just a discussion. So the only business that we have this evening is the 1200 West. So if you have anything to discuss other than those items, feel free to come up to the podium at this moment. I think we're good. All right, seeing none, we will move on to our old business. Item 6A, consideration of the site plan approval for 1200 West Nine Mile. We'll start with an introduction from our planner, Kyle Bryce. Thank you.
Just to know, I'm going to sit this one out.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. This item was brought before you at the April 27th, 2022 special meeting. So we did discuss it in pretty great detail. There were some comments made. I think the applicant has made some revisions to the plans. They brought it back to you for approval for tonight. I revised the staff report noting the changes. But for anyone in the public out there, I'll run through the project very quickly. This is located between Pinecrest and Central on the north side of Nine Mile. It's 1200 West Nine Mile. There's an existing medical office that's actually connected to an existing multiple family. It's proposed for this site to be demolished, graded flat, because there's quite a number of elevation, actually, on site. And instead, constructed a 44-unit multiple-family site. So I just wanted to show the aerial here. So this is the revised site plan. The building is tucked close to Nine Mile, so it is about, I think, 84 feet away from residents behind it. There are 45 parking spaces proposed, 50 are required. So the applicant is still seeking a five-parking space waiver that is unchanged from their previous meeting. Primarily, there was a lot of discussion at our last meeting about shifting the building. So they are required to build within 0 to 10 feet of the lot line. 80% of the building has to be masked up to that point. But there was some flexibility. We discussed moving it back in order to give some more breathing room on the sidewalk. I think there were some concerns about existing utility poles on the sidewalk that if the building was at the lot line, might actually interfere with accessibility going along that route. So the applicant was able to check our standards for the drive aisles and for parking space dimensions. They were actually able to shift the building six feet back. So that allows for some green space up front, allows for some breathing room in front of the building. They were able to make everything work in the rear. So we do have a one-way here in the rear. A lot of the parking lengths have been reduced to 16 feet, which is permitted as long as they have a two-foot overhang. So you can see they actually did a little two-foot green space here along the western side of the property. And this center area now has a two-feet green space here. They are proposing to curb the eastern property line, which was another kind of unanswered question that we had at the time. Other than that, the site plan is really relatively unchanged from when we last saw it. They were able to shift it, and they were able to make the numbers work. Some other, I guess, good news is that they were able to revise their landscape plan accordingly, and they were able to comply with the requirements. So they've added some additional trees, notably along the front of the building. So they've been really able to comply with the green space requirement. They also, after some discussion with the commission, revised the spaces in front, so they do have a loading zone here. It's about 40 feet long. That requires removing two of the spaces out front, but they still have five on-street parking spaces in front of the building.
I'm just while you're mentioning that, Kyle, was that discussed with the city? In... I'm not sure which department might be.
DPW or PD or whoever.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. PD or DPW. Is anyone would be concerned with that shift?
I don't think anyone would be concerned. I mean, we can go through that during the building review and talk to our DPW director. I believe Councilman Pollocka mentioned that it was done at Ferndale House, so I'm not anticipating any issues. The applicant did confirm there is no dumpster on site, so they do have a trash chute that's going into the eastern room, which has a dedicated pickup area. And I did hear back from police. They have no concerns with the site plan. So at this time, I'd like to invite the applicant and the architect up. They do have a material board as well as some additional, I think...
Renderings?
Yeah, I can pass with that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Jason Krieger with Krieger Cloud Architects, 2120 East 11 Mile. And Michael Felito, the owner.
Hello.
Welcome.
So as mentioned, we did... We took in everything that was commented on at the previous meeting, and we think we complied with all of the requests. They were great requests, and we're glad that they came up. I have a material board here. If it's okay, can I bring it up and just kind of walk it up there? Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm not on the mic, but this is the cast stone. This is the burnished block. Perfect. There you go.
Perfect.
Everybody, this is the closest I've ever been. So this is the cast stone. This is the burnished block, okay? And I'll walk it around. You guys can... It'd be like school. We could touch and feel it. We have the red brick. The wood elements that we have on the building is not wood, so it's an aluminum product that's pre-finished, so it'll age well. And then the wood trim... Or I'm sorry, the metal trim that you see is the dark bronze color that we have there. So this represents the material palette. So this is actually what you would see on the... It was on the west side. So that's our fire-rated material. But it... I mean, you could tell like from afar, it looks really good. It's not painted. It's just the colors all the way through.
Through the chair, the cast stone is what's on the bottom of the facades that aren't the west side. And then the burnished CMU is the basically like very similar-looking material that's on the west side.
Just on the west side, correct. That facade right there.
If I remember correctly, thank you.
So do you guys want me to leave this up here? Want me to touch it?
So the burnished block CMU, that would be a typical CMU unit size then?
That is correct. And the cast stone can be cut to whatever size we want, so it'll course out.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
And then one more thing. We handed out some updated aerial renderings just so that you guys could see how the site plan changed. So you can see that, I mean, aesthetically, it looks the same on the north, but on the south, you could see there's more green space. We now have some room for trees and things like that, I believe. We also added the canopy over the live work, so we took that into account. So I think we hit everything that was requested, so let us know if there's any questions. Or Michael, I don't know if you want to say anything?
Well, then the changes bringing the building back definitely makes it more inviting on the street perspective. So we really do appreciate that. I didn't say that.
Great. Well, thank you so much. You really did consider everything we said. We really appreciate all the changes. My first question or really comment, I'm assuming that you have a pretty quick turnaround and there was quite a... Like, changes to be made. I did notice that on C3, C4, I believe C5 and C7, we do not see the shift in the building. Those are some like the grading plans and whatnot. They don't seem to have that same shift in the building. I just wanted to know that those should need to be updated to the current projected site plan.
Absolutely. Yeah, the civil engineers worked as quickly as they could to turn it around, so they probably just didn't have a chance to... Oh, yeah, I see it right there. But it is on... It is on at least the utility plan, so... Which is C5.0.
I had a question mark next to C5, so it's a little bit difficult to tell where that building line was on that one.
Correct. It did shift back six feet, and that will be where the building falls.
And then there was a comment in the staff review that the photometric plan didn't necessarily abide by. And so it was just noted that we might want to see some revision. Is there any issue with that?
Absolutely. The same thing. They couldn't turn the photometric around at time. I'm not making excuses. They just say something.
Yep, of course.
So that would be... We planned on that being deferred to middle of the staff, and it will comply with ordinance. We'll absolutely make sure it applies.
Okay, so I will now actually see if there's anyone in the audience that has any comments or questions on... And I'm seeing some shaky heads. So I will pull it back to the commission, see who would like to start us off with any comments or questions for the applicant.
Through the chair, I'll start. First of all, I appreciate you taking into account a lot of the comments that we brought up. I noticed the awning over the live-work unit right away, and I appreciate that usually. Again, through it out as a detail, that was not a requirement, but I appreciate you listening. The only two comments, one question about... I know we had talked about fencing along the eastern side of the parking to protect the neighbors next door, and I don't see the fencing on the rendering. Was that not possible with the spatial constraints or?
No, you know, to be honest, that may have just been missed. I think we talked about like a low wall or fence, right, to help shield, to help.
I think we had gotten in a conversation about vinyl possibly, if I remember correctly.
Aluminum.
On the west. Aluminum or vinyl, yeah.
It actually was on the west because there's apartments right there.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, on the west, correct, yes.
I mean, I don't think that's a problem.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, well, if it's okay, we could add that to the motion if this does move to a motion.
Okay.
So sorry, just to clarify, so I had from the last meeting vinyl fencing on the west, north, in vinyl or aluminum on the east. Is that consistent with what you recall?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I think Mr. Felito brought up the aluminum for aesthetic reasons. I think that's where that came from, but the aluminum wouldn't...
With the church.
Yeah, correct.
The east.
No, you're good. It wouldn't do much for the folks on the west, though, so.
And then the only other small comment that I would say about the signage for the property, and it may even be something that the city would have to work on, is since you have the five parking spot deficit and since your goal of the live-work units are to actually be as such, is it may be worthwhile to add a sign for the street parking for the row to be two-hour maximum parking, so that way it's actually turnaround and doesn't become into a resident that just decides to make that their parking spot since they didn't get one of the five that were missing. And again, that may be a city responsibility, but just kind of bring that out there.
We can... My suggestion is we make it a two-hour limit during the daytime hours where the live-work people will be in business, but at night, you know, potentially, they can keep the car there overnight if there's a guest. And then during, you know, eight to five, two-hour limit. I don't know if that's possible to city.
I mean, you can put up a sign for anything, so.
That's possible.
Yeah. Okay, but yeah, overall, though, I'm very happy to see the changes that are made, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagfors.
Through the chair. I love seeing the trees on Nine Mile. It looks so good, my man Jason. Commissioner Azar isn't here, and I'm sure she'd be excited too. I think it just adds so much for the pedestrian space because that is a little bit of a tighter sidewalk than downtown, so. Thank you. That's really exciting. I think we've resolved the question about the fences, and I made a note about that. And then also a note about a recommendation to the city to make a daytime two-hour parking zone on the street. And then also, I don't know what the process is. Chair Foster brought it up earlier, but whatever needs to be communicated to the DPW and the Police Department from the CED department to say the planning commission has recommended this because we can't force the city to make a loading zone, but we can very strongly recommend that there be a loading zone and two-hour parking. And we certainly have good examples in the downtown along Troy and along Nine Mile for very similar loading zones. So again, I'm just not sure what the process is, but I wouldn't want it to get missed and then have traffic stacking on Nine Mile, which is what we and the applicant were trying to avoid.
I do believe from the review, it says that that section of Nine Mile is planned to be reconstructed or whatever level of reconstruction in 2024. So we could probably work with engineering and whatever other department we need to to get that.
I just know we had talked about the applicant doing some of the restriping, so I don't want the applicant to get dinged if they strip something as
Right.
as a loading zone, which had been part of the planning commission, but then like the police departments, like, you can't have a loading zone. So that's kind of what I want to avoid is kind of an accidental missed communication.
Right.
It is rebuilding it for...
And then I think my only other question actually is to the commissioners. I'd be interested to know what people think about the burnished CMU and the sample that was brought tonight. I mean, I literally felt it. It seems very similar to the cast stone, which is what we were told to expect. There are some... Are there design details or is it a flat wall?
Do you mind, before we move on to the materials conversation, did you just have a comment on the?
Yeah, I just had a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Are they keeping the... I wasn't aware of a Nine Mile construction issue. Do you know if they're keeping it two later on? Do they?
Oh, I don't know. I just saw that when engineering reviewed your site plans, they had mentioned that there will be... And I said reconstruction. I could be using the wrong term. They might just be repaving in 2024, so we would have to look into the plans for what's...
Through the chair, yeah, I do believe it's just a repaving. I don't think they're doing major reconstruction. Right now, it's a shero. I don't believe that they're putting in dedicated bike lanes. All right, go ahead.
Good question. But just to the chair and to other commissioners, I've made a note about a waiver of the CMU prohibition and a waiver of the minimum-maximum materials, provided that the final materials either meet what's currently proposed or move toward compliance. Like, I don't want to waive the materials minimum-maximum balance and then have it get more out of compliance. But I did make a note about that in relation to Section 24-1849, which I think is our... It's either compatibility or... I don't remember what 24-184 is right now. But that was noted as something that we had discretion over. And because we are talking about materials, I just wanted to make sure we have that on the table for anyone, maybe who feels differently. Or the same. That's it.
How is everyone feeling about, as we would need a waiver for this product based on our design guidelines about using that burnished CMU?
Through the chair, I think the burnished CMU product, now that I can see it, is a nice-looking product. It's nicely finished. It's not that sort of like textured face block that looks like a concrete block. You know, this looks like the cast stone, which is what Jason had told us it would. So I'm comfortable with the material based on the look and feel as presented. And I know that we do need to revisit this conversation about the many broad varieties of CMU in general because we've got kind of a blanket provision.
Thank you, Commissioner Brazen.
It was really helpful to see it. Thank you.
So through... Section 24-184 is our architectural compatibility. And we do have the waiver ability. If it finds that the proposed building design is keeping in with the intent of the section and recommendations of the master plan and meets all of the following conditions, it is determined to not be grossly dissimilar in exterior design and appearance to nearby buildings, and it does not adversely affect property values in the surrounding area. B, it does not adversely affect the desirability of immediate and neighboring areas. C, it does not impair the stability of the area or prevent the most appropriate use and development of real estate. D, it does not adversely affect the public health, safety, comfort, and welfare of the citizens of the city. And E, a structure may be determined to be compatible in design and appearance to other structures in the context in which it is to be located, even if it does not comply with the above criteria. If it has other design features that make it harmonious with the structures or improve the character of the area in which it is located. So if we were comfortable with the burnished CMU and the design of the building as is in the site plan, we would be looking to probably remove condition five of the proposed motion in the packet and add a condition number five that the commission waives the CMU. But in... Kate... Sorry, Commissioner Baker brings up a good point of how we word that. We might want to be potentially maybe a bit specific, so it's not too lenient if the design changes throughout the site plan process. But to the extent that we're looking at the building, I'm assuming that it's going to move forward with the same intent and design character and be an improvement to the area.
Through the chair, to our city planner, Kyle, would you prefer that there be two separate motions on the two separate questions related to Section 24-184, the CMU and the minimum-maximum materials? Or is it all right to combine them? Do you have a preference?
I think it would be okay to combine them. I think that's all right.
That's how I wrote it, but I wasn't sure if you had a preference.
No, I think that's okay.
I would just note also, in terms of the motion, I think that we should just add another finding that... In regards to the parking waiver as well, we do have a separate motion for the parking waiver, but I would add it to the site plan to note that whether or not that parking waiver is approved. Any other comments or questions on 1200 West Nine Mile?
Through the chair. So I actually stand corrected. There already is bike lanes on Nine Mile in that area, so it's just going to be a resurfacing. It'll be a scraping of the asphalt and then a resurface. And I think that is 2024. So you may be done with construction by then. I also want to thank you for taking into consideration all of our suggestions. I just see a huge, huge improvement on the whole project. And there was one other thing that I wanted to ask. Actually, no, two things. I know that one of the suggestions was, you know, because you're moving the building back, you have an opportunity to put balconies on the front. Are you not doing that because you put the trees there? Or you just didn't feel like balconies on the front would be attractive or interesting, given the amount of traffic that's on Nine Mile?
We're still looking into that. Balconies are very, very expensive. So we haven't talked to our property managers to see if we should do all of them or our insurance agency yet to see what the impact is on insurance rates. Typically, we don't do balconies in our projects just because of... You know, they look great and people like them, but on an operational standpoint, they add a lot of problems. So we haven't really looked into it yet.
Okay, just a thought. And the other thing is, before you leave tonight, I want to make sure that we exchange phone numbers with the historical society so that either you contact them or they contact you in regards to being able to take some photos and walk through the site.
That'd be great. Do you want to give me the number now?
I don't want it to be on the record because it's not my phone number. We can exchange phone numbers after. I'll give you... Kyle, I'll give you the number later on.
Yeah, I can facilitate that.
Okay, yeah, Kyle will send it to me.
Yeah, it's not my phone number, so I don't want to broadcast it out in the minutes.
That's fair. Thank you.
The chair's home phone number.
Jan would be thrilled.
Just in terms of the landscaping, I do have a question. I see that we do have a hedgerow going around the transformer in the northwest corner, but there's nothing shielding it from the residents. Is there any issue with landscaping around that for shielding in terms of access or whatnot? Or I believe that it would make a nice improvement for the residents to
On the south side of the transformer?
Have some landscaping around that. Yeah, on the south side of the transformer, northwest corner.
Wherever DT will allow us to add, we'll try to cover it as much as possible.
It depends on how the panel opens.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
I'd be happy to make the first of the two motions. Is it ready? All right. I would move in the matter of 1200 West Nine Mile that the planning commission approved the parking reduction request for five off-street parking spaces based on plans dated May 12, 2022, with the findings as detailed in the packet.
Hagford, second.
And that is a motion by Baker and second by Hagford. Can I have a roll call vote, Mr. Braze?
Shoot.
Sorry, any discussion on the motion?
Discussion, discussion of the motion. I believe, just to make sure that it's noted for the minutes, I believe that Commissioner Scholter has recused himself from this item, just to make sure that it's in the minutes. Is that correct? Chair Foster, okay.
Sorry, we are ready for the roll call.
Commissioner Hagfords?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Akers?
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen?
Yes.
Councilman Pollocka?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
I would also move in the matter of 1200 West Nine Mile that the planning commission approved the site plan based on plans dated May 12, 2022. Is that the right date, Chair Foster?
That is what is in the packet.
Or updated? Sorry, I'm just pausing because I want to make sure we captured Jason's most recent updated. Is that the date of the bubble drawings, May 12?
It looks like it is.
Okay.
Yeah, through the chair, I made sure that we were all
You.
all set on the dates.
Okay. All right, I'll go back. I would, okay. I would move in the matter of 1200 West Nine Mile that the planning commission approved the site plan based on plans dated May 12, 2022, with the following findings and subject to the following conditions. I would add an additional finding, number four, that the parking waiver has been approved. I would remove Condition Number 5 and add a new Condition Number 5. Condition Number 5 is a waiver of the CMU prohibition and a waiver of the minimum slash maximum materials requirements, with the note that the final materials must meet what is currently proposed or move toward compliance with ordinance Section 24-184-9. I would add Condition Number 6, that a vinyl fence be added on the west side of the site and that aluminum or vinyl be added on the east side. Did I get that one right? West and east? Look left and right here. And then a new Condition Number 7 is a recommendation to the city that on-street parking be made a daytime two-hour parking zone. I don't know if that's appropriate, actually, now that I think about it, to make it a condition of the site plan. Is it okay? Because, I mean, the applicant can't actually carry it out if I noted their recommendation to the city.
I don't think it should hold up the site plan if it's written as a recommendation.
Okay, I wouldn't want to accidentally.
I kind of agree with your comment, but I don't think it's going to hold it up.
Okay. Noting that the applicant can't make that decision, that the city makes that decision.
Hagford, seconds.
Sorry, just real quick. So that is a motion by Commissioner Baker and a chair by second. So discussion.
Did you add the updating of the photometric drawings?
So is current Condition Number 3, says that a photometric plan shall be revised to show zero foot candles, but the civil, so there should be a Condition Number 8 to provide updated civil drawings to match plans dated May 12?
Correct. Yeah, C3, C4, and C7. The sighting needs to be updated to match current.
All right, I will restate that. So that would be a Condition Number 8, that Sheets C3, C4, and C7 must be updated to match the current sighting.
I would, do we, I recommended that we also request landscaping around the transformer, on the east and south side of the transformer, to the extent possible allowed by utility provider.
One moment, I'll look at that. So that would be a new Condition Number 9, add landscape screening on the east and the south side of the transformer to the extent allowed by DT.
Or utility provider.
I'm sorry, allowed by the utility.
I don't know if it's DT, but.
They are the monopoly, so I do.
I would assume. And then.
I have another one. I'd love to meet them.
And then for Condition 6, do we want to specify that that's a five-foot vinyl fence? And I believe that it should be for the west lot line and north lot line.
There's a block on the north, the block walls on the north?
We want to go with the block on the north? Also, it's not necessarily noted on the site plan?
The north wall is a vinyl to match the.
Oh, vinyl on the north?
Yeah.
I don't think it's on the site plan.
So vinyl on west, aluminum or vinyl on east, and vinyl on north. Okay, I did, actually, I did notice that the material wasn't noted on the site plan. Thank you.
Okay, so sorry, to reiterate, so a five-foot, I'm assuming, vinyl fence on the west, north, and then a vinyl or aluminum on the east?
I thought there was a. Why, why would you restrict it to five feet? The screening walls.
Or just to say, between five and four. So just say as a screening wall that meets with the ordinance then?
Okay. Okay.
For more clarity.
Okay.
But I think screening walls.
So, Dustin, were you my secondor?
Yes, yeah. So Hagford supports those amended changes.
Okay, that would be updating Conditions 6, adding Conditions 8 and 9. I've got them written out here too, Kyle.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion on the table? Kyle, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hagfords?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Akers?
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen?
Yes.
Councilman Pollocka?
Yes.
And again, Scholter recusing himself from the motion. We do have enough votes, so the motion passes. Thank you.
Everybody, just want to let you guys know that this is our third project now in the city of Ferndale. We absolutely love working with you guys and the city. It's a breathtaking experience compared to other cities that I've been known to work in.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to discussion items, A, a discussion of potential upcoming ordinance amendments. We will have a overview by our planner, Kyle Braze.
Yeah, I just want to start off by noting, you know, this is all just discussion only. We just want to get the background and mindset of the planning commission. This is all related to form-based code amendments that were completed in 2019. I was not here at that time, nor was our new CED director. So we just want to get a sense of the history of this and just make the planning commission aware of some, let's say, you know, issues or some concerns that we've noted. So to get started here on your screens, we do have a zoning map of the city. So these form-based code amendments were enacted in 2019. They apply to most of our non-residential districts. So they apply to MXD 2, which is a purple here, and most of Hilton. They apply to MXD 1, which is some of the light purple. It's a little bit of a rare zoning district. They apply to CBD, which is our nine and woodward area, and they apply to our industrial districts of M1 and M2. So they do apply to a lot of different zonings throughout the city. So in particular, these are, some of the language I'm referring to is that build-to requirement, where 80% of the building's frontage has to be within zero to 10 feet of the lot line. Some of these zoning districts, a lot of you go zero to 15 feet. But the intent was that the building gets built up close. And this came to a head with 965 Wanda. So this body saw that as a discussion item about a month ago, maybe more. And so we knew that they had to go for a variance. You can see the site here, it's bound in red. This is Wanda going along north and south on the east side here. They're looking to do an expansion on the north side, so some of this vacant area here. This expanded area is subject to that build-to requirement. So that was a major point of discussion with the BZA as they considered this variance. So this is the site plan of the site. We do have the blue here is the existing building. The green is the expansion here. This red tapered area, this red funnel, that's the only access to the site. It is a secure site, so this is, you know, fenced off. So trucks do use some existing loading bays and areas here. Just to illustrate the point of our variance or our ordinance and the intent of it, this is the expansion, and this is roughly where the expansion would need to be if they were complying with the ordinance as written. So the applicant was able to demonstrate that the internal processes of the industrial site would be severely impacted by doing this. We did take a tour of the facility. We saw some of the layout. And especially in these industrial buildings, it's not a matter of just shifting how things work. They are laid out very deliberately to be as efficient as possible. In addition, this would severely impact the site circulation. So the BZA did grant the variance, and it was a large variance, it was about 246 feet, which is a big number, but it's, you know, a result of being on a huge site, one of the biggest in the city. So really, we just wanted to come to you because BZA really did not believe that these build-to requirements and these form-based code requirements were meant to be part of the industrial districts. So we're just looking for some background on the 2019 form-based code overhaul, the intent, if there is any wiggle room for exceptions, if industrial districts are really supposed to be a part of it or not. We just think that there could be other sites throughout, not just the industrial zoning district, but other commercial zoning districts, that if they want to do an expansion, they're going to be subject to something similar to this. So we foresee this issue coming to the ZBA more in the future. So again, we're not looking for, you know, a quick fix, just do this. We'd like to study this. We'd like to take our time. So we're just looking for any kind of background at this time.
Thank you. Just want to start off the conversation from the table here. To be very, I guess, clear about the discussion tonight, in a separation from what happened at the BZA, both related and similar, but also distinct, in that the BZA discussed and reviewed the ordinance sections and the proposed amendments by the applicant in specificity to that site. And that site was very unique, and they did grant those variances related to that site specifically. But in that discussion, it was brought up that this also may be an issue for other sites in general. So that's what we wanted to look at tonight, in that is the, some of the ordinance amendments, the form-based design amendments that we had made in 2019, are they appropriate for industrial? And I was, I not believe I was on the commission at the time that they were adopted. So I would be curious to hear from those that were, if you can recall the conversation from that time, and the districts that we included in that amendment. Anyone?
Chair, can I ask a clarifying question? And the answer might be yes, both. Are we wanting to add more discretion and flexibility to make changes so that things don't need to go to the zoning appeals, you know, similar to what we did tonight where we had some discretion under the architectural compatibility guidelines? Or are we talking about a broader change to the zoning code for industrial?
I mean, I think we're looking for a bit of both. I mean, we're still exploring options at this point.
That's fair. Yeah, I can see the first, you know, giving us a lot of latitude.
Well, I think it's.
While acknowledging that this is, these are huge districts, some of which front, you know, like the Medical marijuana place, I still call it medical, sorry, the marijuana facility that's going to be at, what, nine and Faro, maybe, that we adjusted our site plan for? I think that our new form-based code really worked in that because you're right in line with the commercial district where it was with the LTV Steel site, it totally didn't. So.
Yeah, I mean, for the record, I'm really not opposed to the form-based code in principle, and especially for new construction, I think it does work as intended. It's just, you know, a site like this with existing conditions, it's just very difficult. But I'd also like to bring up our new CED director. He's going to get a fancier introduction at the end of the meeting. But I'd like to know, he did attend that BZA meeting, which is probably one of the more interesting ones in recent memory.
That's a long one.
Yeah. Shout out to Commissioner Hagfords for attending that as well. But yeah, Mr. Caruso here attended on the second day of work, no less, so.
That'll matter.
Thank you. So yeah, we'll do introductions a little bit later. But I think there's a couple of things we're looking for. The first is the commission's remembrance of the form-based code and was it meant to apply or not? And so if it wasn't, then we get to our answer quickly. But if nobody remembers, then it goes on to step two. Step two is seeing if you guys, as a board, sort of agree that this could be a problem again. I think we're looking for more feedback on, yeah, we think that might be an issue. And then if it is an issue, we'd be looking for direction, just a little direction on, we should address the issue. I think what I'm concerned about is just rashly making a different decision to undo this without understanding me fully what properties this affects, how it would look. So I think we've had one week, but we weren't able to study this issue in depth. So after we get your direction, we want to tour the city, look at different buildings. I think in, maybe.
I think in maybe a retail environment, this makes more sense because you can bring the building up front, and retail's kind of what it is. In a manufacturing facility, I mean, there's overhead cranes, there's natural gas lines, there's water lines, there's everything set up for a reason. And so you can't just, you know, add a plant or a part of a plant somewhere else, a manufacturing plant, and just think they can make it work because it just doesn't work that way. And I think if you guys toured this with us, which we did as staff the other day, you would then understand, oh, this is why everything's set up exactly the way it is. So we'd be looking for a remembrance on the zoning change, seeing if you guys as a group think that this might be a problem in the future. If so, should we fix the issue? And if we do, do you have any thoughts on how to do that, either through an exception or through removal of the zoning district? So just an open discussion.
Thank you. I would like to also remind the commission that we're, at our next meeting, we'll be discussing the draft master plan, which is in draft form, and will be ready for us to review, go through the public hearing process, and we're on a time schedule to potentially be adopting the new master plan in August, I believe, September, sometime late summer, early fall. So I think first and foremost, we're kind of like remembering, as this is a recent update, is it what we're attending? I'm assuming that we had followed through with the similar intentions, but now that we're seeing the effects of the ordinance, is it standing true to what we had expected? Is this is an easy, okay, well, this is maybe not exactly what we had intended, maybe this is an easy, well, we can go back to what it was prior to a couple of years ago. And if not, if we want to make some changes, maybe more appropriate to wait for the master plan process to make some of those updates, you know, in terms of like the suggestion of, well, maybe we can do something very similar but different, have some sort of waiver process. If we're going to look more into kind of restructuring or making more edits, it might be more appropriate to do down the line, but just wanted to keep that in everyone's forefront of, in terms of where we're at in the planning process as well.
Chair, how many of us were here for the remembrance process? Me and Deb, I know.
I think I was, I joined like right as you were, I wasn't in the development process of.
You didn't come on the tour with us of M1?
No, I didn't.
Deb's neighborhood, okay.
I think it's only you two.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, because, and actually, I think Justin's brain would be helpful for this, too, frankly.
I talk to Justin regularly. I could get his input on this.
I don't know if we can pay him for 10 hours of his brain, but it might be very well worth it. The process that we went through, acknowledging that M1 and M2 are also, they're big districts, and they're relatively different in how they're evolving because the sizes of the buildings are also pretty different. So we toured several buildings in M1 that were being redeveloped into new uses that were either manufacturing with ancillary retail or pretty full retail. This was when we were trying to figure out where marijuana facilities would be located and how they would impact our M districts after we decided they'd be in M districts. But also wanting to accommodate, understand, and to some extent embrace some of the new uses that are happening in places like Urban Ross, for example, where you've got a big building that's now been subdivided into several, this sort of mix of retail, restaurant, and still industrial uses, but also not inappropriately push too hard to push off manufacturing businesses that are still very much there. We have a very high occupancy rate in our manufacturing districts, so we didn't want to make such aggressive changes or progressive changes to try to push commercial or residential in manufacturing districts that we pushed out our manufacturing base, right? So there's like this natural evolution happening. We tried to understand and address it, and then push new development or significant remodels in the direction of mixed-use walkability and industrial with ancillary commercial because that's where we sort of see this evolving. There are two recent site plans that come to mind where I think our form-based code worked quite well, and they're both in M2. One was the new self-storage facility at Wanda, just south of Nine Mile, so kind of near the Detroit Fleet. It's abutting a residential district across the street, so it's kind of at the tail end of the M2. They were reusing a building, but also doing some additions. So the addition kind of pulled forward toward the street. We closed off some front parking to make it better pedestrian use. Like, we really didn't change much about the existing building, but the addition and the landscaping really made it a better pedestrian and neighborhood abutting site. The other one was the.
Sorry, just, has that been constructed, or is that just a site plan?
That was the tire place that was turning to self-storage?
It's actually just down the street from this facility.
Yeah.
Yeah, through the chair, I think it's going through the construction, it's going through the construction process right now.
Oh, thank you.
And then the other was the marijuana facility at nine, Secret Stash, nine and Pharaoh, right? So again, big, deep industrial site, but it had been cleared, so they were essentially starting new. So we had one reuse, one new construction, both of which either abutted residential or commercial, where the form-based code worked well. It worked to serve that evolution that we see happening. This, I mean, LTV steel, I mean, that's like the biggest, probably, industrial site that we've got in Ferndale, right? So that's why I asked the question of, do we just, as a commission, need some more discretion to try to keep things off of the zoning board's plate for these very unique, built-out, heavy industrial sites that don't have a lot of foot traffic, that won't have a lot of foot traffic, that, you know, like, is it that we need more discretion or that we don't like the form-based code? So I think, yes, we need more discretion, and yes, I like the form-based code at this same time.
I think, I have the same recollection, that it was that, at that point, we were looking at the new uses in the M1, M2, or M1, and that it was more that there were, there was this retail component that was coming out in a lot of the applicants that we had. It definitely wasn't to impede existing.
Yes, yeah. That said, part of the discussion of this site, when they came for their discussion item, was that they were adding buildings to the site. So I asked, all right, city of Ferndale, if you want to add a building to this site, why aren't you complying with your own zoning ordinance, right? So I think we got an answer as to why the city's building is best situated in the back, and the steel building is best situated here. Like, that's a very fair and honest answer. But you would want, ideally, the city to comply with your ordinance when they construct their buildings, or the ability to give a waiver for certain reasons or under certain circumstances, I think.
Through the chair. So I was not on the PC back in 19. It was Mayor Martin at the time.
Yes.
And, because I know that he went on that tour because he chatted with me about it.
Yeah, so did Melanie.
And I agree with you, Commissioner Baker. I think we have, I think the instances that we've had are unique to these areas, M1 and M2, because they abut residential. Like, in this situation, I wouldn't want a zero lot line right on Wanda with residential right across the street. On Nine Mile, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't want a zero lot line because it is on Nine Mile, and we're looking for walkability. So I'm wondering if we need to have some flexibility in the areas of these zones, you know, the outer areas of the zones, to allow for more breathing room between residential and industrial.
And so, sorry, through the chair, just to clarify, though, so like self-storage came toward residential, so very similar situation where you've got residential on one side of Wanda and manufacturing on the other. They're both M2. So self-storage by Detroit Fleet came toward the residential, but low-intensity use, non-manufacturing use.
Yeah, and it was a very small piece of property. It wasn't, it wasn't a huge building that was going to be built right on the sidewalk.
Whereas because of the use, the heavy manufacturing use and the truck traffic at this site, you know, and potentially dangerous chemical storage on site and that sort of thing, you're thinking that the use of the facility should be part of our consideration, too. So it's not as appropriate for this use in particular to come as close to residential in M2. Interesting, okay.
So there's actually, if you look at the existing buildings in the M1, M12, a lot of them do have a serial lot line. And so historically, that's how industrials built. Historically, industrial uses had more externalities in terms of stylists and stuff and everything, and those processes became less detrimental to residential. So I would probably argue that for the majority of the time, it will make sense to use those same design guidelines that we do currently have. I agree with Chair Baker that this was a unique situation. I do believe that we have, I mean, we also have, and we recently saw in discussion another M1 property that is fairly similar. It's along the railroad and has a unique nature, but rather than using, ice house, yes, thank you. But they're using a PUD to get, in the proper fashion, using the tools that they have within the ordinance to develop that site more appropriately, that works with the site. And I would guess, I don't remember whether or not we had that conversation with this site in particular on 9651, 865, whatever.
A PUD?
Yeah, did we talk about a PUD or?
Because it wasn't a change in use. It was an extension of a facility, but it wasn't, I mean, they weren't combining uses, they weren't changing zoning, they were. Usually trigger.
Usually trigger, but really what's usually triggering a PUD is that, one, it has a public benefit, which we were using for a city site that really had a great public benefit to it, and allows for some variance within the standards of the, so I'm just saying that if we look at the district overall, what's existing and what we want, personally, I think that with how we had implemented this ordinance in 2019, to me, it still stands that it makes sense without further review. I think that this is certainly an outlier. We do have one coming to us in the future as a PUD or site plan that is also an outlier. And I think to the extent that there are certain uses that do have a more intense industrial nature, that, you know, potentially that we could look into something along the lines of, well, when is it appropriate, and should we have some certain waivers? But I think that would take a pretty intense review of what is needed and how we could, you know, adapt tools to accommodate that.
And through the chair, really quick about the building that we thought was for the city during the BZA meeting. That building is not necessarily set in stone that it would become a city building. So that also may be a reason why they wouldn't go for a PUD, because if they were to turn around and not do that building, then they, in essence, did not change anything about the property, so PUD would then not be, it wouldn't be.
Argue the public benefit would be difficult.
Exactly. So I think that's possibly why they also didn't do it, so they didn't pigeonhole themselves into saying that that has to be a done deal either.
Well, in recent discussion items, though, we have had, we have talked about how the purpose of the industrial area is not for pedestrians to walk around. I'm actually, I differ from a lot of the views. I don't think, I don't think form-based should be allowed in, I don't think it should be, it's not appropriate for the manufacturing district because that's to establish a strong streetscape for pedestrians. And the M1 district is the only purely functional district that we have in the city of Ferndale. And I know that we've talked about getting marijuana businesses kind of out of the M1 district and M2 district because they don't necessarily belong in there because of the intensity of use. So the one, it sounds like the only buildings where form bases have worked for are the ones that are very public-facing buildings, and that's, I don't think public-facing buildings is what M1 is for. It's for producing things for a very functional purpose. It's not so we can have a pretty streetscape. It's so people can get to work and build a building the best way, that works for their function. I don't, I don't care about how things necessarily look down there.
Through the chair, I take your point. I don't necessarily agree with it just based on how I'm seeing other, particularly like the smaller buildings in M1 and other cities change and develop, but I also think that if we lead with zoning that has a form-based expectation, then we're sending a message and we get some of the manufacturing with accessory retail uses, you know, hot shops almost aside because those are purely commercial, we shoehorn them in there, and I agree, that was a shoehorn. At the time, you know, we made a decision that we thought was right, in hindsight, probably didn't work as well, but the, the city needs to take some responsibility for the infrastructure that's been totally neglected in those, in those areas as well when it comes to streetlighting, sidewalks, curbs. So I think the market is pushing in a, in a direction that includes some type of retail component, and that the city, if it wants to safely follow that trend, needs to invest in those districts.
So I agree, I agree with that. We have certainly discussed that this, the intention of the district is not for a pedestrian-oriented, currently, like for the aesthetic of a downtown, like pedestrian, you know, walkable nature, although I think that pedestrian safety is important everywhere in the area, but it certainly is an area where we need to have trucks and are focusing more on the industrial nature. But I would just, I guess, point out, though, that form-based doesn't necessarily mean pedestrian-friendly. It's more so that we're, we're focusing more on the form versus the exact use. So it does make it our, in terms of like sustainability and resilience of the, we're talking more about the form of the building as like a long-term, I'm kind of pulling my thoughts together as I'm speaking, so I apologize, but it's more of a long-term vision of, you know, just looking at the form versus like the current use. And yes, this is an industrial district, and we are talking about maintaining as industrial district, but I guess what I'm getting at is that form-based doesn't necessarily have to mean pedestrian-friendly. I put it in a very long way, I apologize.
Yeah, and if we give a lot more, if we kind of make it like, maybe not like as strict as form-based usually is, and we give a lot, and we really loosen up on a lot of the restrictions because when I look at that building with the red lines, well, I have a hard time imagining how an industrial building that's that close to the lot line could have a loading dock work. And industrial buildings will need a loading dock, will need certain things that are not necessarily appropriate for a, for a, like, a marketing district or something, or a mixed-use district. So I think that, that we need to look a little bit more towards function in these, unless we want to make them effectively mixed-use, because we already have mixed-use districts. If we want to make them mixed-use districts, then make them mixed-use districts. We're calling this manufacturing.
And that's the push I didn't want to, I felt that was a push too far because now you're beginning to edge out industrial uses.
Oh, yeah, of course. And but by saying that we want.
Yeah, that was, that was definitely, yeah.
But by saying we want to make this a very public-facing area where people can walk around, we're turning into mixed-use.
I guess I was thinking that the uses are already doing that.
And yeah, or may, and doesn't it make sense, then, to maybe introduce a different use that's more of an industrial step-down zone, like maybe that's, that's on the, the more residential edge where we're seeing the more commercial uses, where we're seeing the marijuana shops, where we're seeing the public storage, and have that maybe more form-based, but as you go deeper inside there, maybe that becomes more of your pure M districts. But as you go deeper inside there, maybe that becomes more of your pure M districts.
So.
Through the, sorry, through the chair.
So go ahead.
So with the, the image on the, on the screen there, if we were at Drayton and Burdette, that wouldn't bother me as much as the fact that we're on Wanda and right across the street is a residential. I, I feel like we owe it to the residents that live across from this area the ability to have a nice front scape to these buildings. So I would expect these buildings along Wanda to at least be set back a ways. If, if we were in the center of an industrial area, I have no problem with this.
That's an existing building, though. I mean, that is the character of our district because that's what was functional or what was built. And to maximize the space, to maximize the amount of floor area. So I think, I guess it could be argued that to be more functional, they're maximizing their, you know, floor space in these instances. We do have small sites and I'm assuming that's what was happening there. But I, I mean, I, I get that that is certainly an unattractive spot. I actually lived a block away from there and would have certainly argued that I would, could use some cleanup.
Well, and some landscaping. I mean, there's not even a sidewalk on that side.
Right. As in, many places have missing or interrupted sidewalks and narrow easements.
Well, and so, I mean, to that effect, I mean, even on the 1200 West Nine Mile, which is in, on Nine Mile in a commercial business district, we even talked about wanting to set back to provide a more appropriate area for pedestrians. So I don't, I'm just, I guess, more so getting at, form-based is not necessarily the issue. It's more so about what, because we can use form-based or traditional zoning codes to get to the same.
Through the chair, and I think based on the conversation with BZA, this was very much a very rare situation. Like we pretty much pinpointed this site and Detroit Axle, the only two sites in the entire city of this size that could really be doing this kind of an addition unless someone were to go and just accumulate properties in an entire city block and try to rip them down. So, you know, to change an entire zoning code off of two exception buildings, you know, I don't know, that, that may be a little, a little much. I mean, I think, you know, trying to streamline the process where it doesn't have to go through how much reviewers it went through would be great. But to throw it out and say, oh, this one built, this one site didn't work for it. So let's get rid of this ordinance. I don't know if that's really the, the right way of doing it either.
For my, as being new and for any of the folks following along at home, the, the general concern is that if they exceed the form-based code setback requirements, then it needs to go through the Boning Zoning Board of Appeals to, to approve that variance. And then that process is lengthy and we're trying to avoid having that repeating over and over again. Right, that's.
That's, that's how I'm kind of interpreting this question is just trying to streamline that. But again.
I just wanted, that, that's what I, that's what I picked up. So I just wanted to make sure that that was specifically the like process flow.
Through the chair, historically, if, if the BZA sees the same issue coming over and over and over again, then what needs to happen is our, our code needs to be updated to reflect the fact that all of these people keep coming and asking for the same thing.
And then that would be like a, an exception for specifically M1 and M2 somehow to circumvent needing to go through the appeals process if they had a reasonable exception?
Through the chair, that was my, that was my question to the staff was, you know, are we, are we looking for flexibility like we had tonight with materials? You know, we were able to make an exception at the table. They didn't have to go for a variance, which is another cost in time and money. Or are we looking to have a bigger conversation about the form-based code in the district? I think they said yes to both. So I think they said yes to what Commissioner Eggers is asking about, you know, with do we need more flexibility in interpretation? But also I heard our staff say, yes, we'd like to have a, some more background and perhaps a larger conversation about the, the way that the updated code impacts the district in general.
So the zoning ordinance actually has a schedule of regulations for the industrial districts that I believe is the former schedule of regula, schedule of regulations that is now superseded by the.
Unicode not updated?
Well, so that's what I'm a bit confused about. So in the, so Section 24-184 that was mentioned earlier when we were doing the site plan review, that's the architectural compatibility section. And that in subsection F has the rules and measurements and definitions for the design-based zoning districts. So the high building, different elements, the frontage, the facade, the build-to, all those are in that subsection F. And there it states that it relates to M1 and M2 in addition to the CBD and the mixed-use districts. So those supersede other, the schedule of regulations, which is still showing. So I believe the one option we would have is to remove that M1 and M2 or either or from that subsection F, the rules and measurement definitions, and then have, what we have for other subsections is just our schedule of regulations that would inform the, the height and the building sighting and whatnot for this. So that would be the one option. That is what we formally had prior to this 2019 update with the, the form-based code rules. And that, or we could have, we could add some language that would allow for some flexibility. We could have some sort of waiver. Alternatively, we could kind of scrap both of those, the former and, well, the former two, the old schedule of regulations and zoning, or the form-based code, and do something different. And so that's kind of what I said in terms of, once we get to where we think we have an idea of what we're comfortable with or what we want to move forward to, we kind of like have to decide what then tool and option are we going to choose? And if we do think that we want to go as extreme as, well, really, we need to decide what is best and maybe we need to do something different, then it might be more appropriate after the master planning process. So just the reason why, for anyone at home who's might be wondering, is so our zoning ordinance is based on our master plan. So it is the rules that maintains or helps us enact or to realize our master plan. And so with that master plan update, that the draft is going to be released publicly very soon and we will be going through the whole public planning process, then we can create rules based on that public feedback and that master plan and how that will guide any decisions that we have.
Through the chair, if I can just elaborate on a couple of things. So I wouldn't think this will go forward anytime soon, any changes. Probably two, three, four months or something before we could even know what we're doing. Because the last thing I want to do is make a decision based on this or a recommendation, not think it through, and then there's another problem on the flip side that we find out. So it'll be a while, maybe even after the master plan. I don't see another variance coming in right away. So this isn't an item that needs to be addressed next week. And I really want to tour a lot of different facilities. You had mentioned it being a PUD. And so that was my question initially when I came on the day two is why is this a variance? Why isn't it a PUD? Especially when you added almost 100% of building square footage. I think they added 200,000 square feet to the existing 211,000 square feet. So that seemed like it was new. It could have righted a lot of wrongs on the site, non-conforming issues. And so I question that too. I don't have an answer on why it wasn't, it just wasn't, and here we are.
I think the answer, I mean, which had forced to finally reiterate it, is that it is a very unique site. So I think it, it does make sense in this case.
Yeah. And then in terms of it being an issue, it's not so much on timing. It wasn't the extra month, although the applicant would have loved to have saved a month at a step. It's, as, as Counselor mentioned, bringing this request over and over again. Then you start realizing this isn't working out. And also because the board could make a decision that denies someone and you don't want to deny them if they had a legitimate reason. So I hate to go ask for a variance because one could be yes, one could be no. And so I'd rather just get to the heart of the problem and address it. I think you guys are hitting on all the things that we were hitting on. We have the same thoughts of maybe it's a changing environment and hold them to a different standard. You know, push them to make form-based code and might probably look better. And then we have the issues of, well, it's manufacturing and this use isn't changing right now. It's going to be heavy industrial and so why would we hold them to the standard? So you're running through all the things that we ran through. So that's very helpful for us. Thank you.
Through the chair, I've never known this commission in almost 15 years to make a quick change to the zoning ordinance. So I think it would be, your, you know, your thought about the order of operations in terms of making sure that the master plan is updated before a significant change is made. In general, I completely support, you know, we had a number of to-dos coming out of the last master plan update. And one of them really specifically focused on, I think it was just on M1. Frankly, I don't remember if it was on all industrial, but I know it had to do with Loiter Industrial. And then that resulted in the 2019 update because that, that was one of the to-dos in the master plan, to your point.
To be honest, before coming this evening, I was kind of of the mind that that, it almost didn't make sense that the M1, M2 were included in this. And, but just, I think the more the, you know, this was a deliberate and, I mean, as Commissioner Baker just said, we definitely don't come to any changes lightly or quickly. It certainly was something that was looked at. It was debated, there were tours. This was a conscious decision to include the districts. But I think that it sounds like, you know, we're kind of seeing some potentially unintended consequences as we realize, which, you know, always comes along with zoning ordinance updates. And it looks like something that we might want to pursue further in terms of making some adjustments.
And I think that we, I think if we decide how we want this land to be, how we want this district to be used, if the master plan helps define how this, if we want to encourage more pedestrian use, then there's a clear answer to that. Or if we want to discourage the pedestrian use and allow it to be more heavy industrial, there's a clear answer to that. But I, I think right now, we're, we don't know how we want this, this area to be used. And so there's multiple answers based on how that flushes out.
As a change industry. Yeah, through the chair, we were trying to look to the future, as you do. You know, anyone who's building anything like this, they're, they're looking to the future. You know, our applicant who was here tonight, he's making a 20, 30, 40-year investment, right? As, you know, are the folks in the M2 who went to the zoning board. So, you know, are, are the trends that we were seeing in 2019, are they relevant in 2022, 23? Are they still, you know, is our manufacturing vacancy rate? Like all of that sort of information, you know, we've just had, you know, sort of massive upheaval internationally for two years. So like how it has that changed our vacancy rate? Are we seeing more or less vacancy in small buildings or big buildings? I think those will be interesting things to consider. The smaller buildings, I think, were evolving faster in their types of uses. So the M1 was evolving faster than the M2. So the sub-district idea may be where evolution is going. But M2 is heavy manufacturing, as it is, it's heavy manufacturing. And, and M1 is where it gets squishier.
Through the chair, what do we consider small, though? I mean, honestly, you don't see small building construction anymore. Everything's big just because of cost.
We just did, though. Remember by Jackie's old shop, so like East Drayton and Wolcott, wasn't it? On East Drayton, near the train tracks?
Wasn't that a big warehouse building, though? I mean, it was.
No, it was subdivided. It was small, it was like three or four units.
It was like, it was like small, like sheds. It almost looked like a giant barn.
It was when we had the whole metal panel.
Yeah, but it was one big building that was just divided, is what I'm saying.
But it was, it was big like 10,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet big, not like 200,000 square feet big.
But also the, the intent for the ordinance between the M1 and M2 is more so in terms of intensity of use. The M1 district is designed to accommodate industrial warehouse and similar uses that generate minimal noise, glare, odors, dust, vibration, air and water pollution, fire and safety hazards, potentially harmful or obnoxious matter, radiation, or other potential nuisances, and where the M2 is more intense. And I think we have had that discussion in terms of it does make sense to have more setbacks and so some more breathing room between like M2 types of uses and residential versus like M1. So I think that's certainly something to consider when we're looking at making any potential updates. But the point's also taken that a lot of our sites are fairly small in use. So sometimes they can potentially accommodate better M1 versus like M2 type of use. Also something to consider.
Like our momentum just.
Any other comments, any burning? Do you have what you need? Do you need further direction from us?
Krista would be helpful for this, too.
Krista?
Krista.
Okay.
Azar.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. I think that was what we were looking for. So just for the background I've got, it's more of a evolution of industrial, you know, how we looked at the form-based code and, and these uses that are more like retail or transition, transitionatory in, in nature. And I completely agree, Commissioner Baker, that there have been absolutely good uses of this, even since I've been here. So there were some concerns about abiding residential, creating breathing room for pedestrians. You know, just looking at a few different options as Chair Foster laid out. We will continue to explore that. And as we've indicated, we'll probably sit on it and study it, probably look at different sites, go on some tours. And once the master plan process is completed, you know, I think we can take a look at this even further.
I imagine we'll have quite a few zoning updates that we'll want to make at the end of the planning process. Thank you. All right, on to administrative items then. We have a 2021 Planning Commission annual report. Mr. Bryce.
Yeah, through the chair, that's been included in your packets. Based on what I've seen in years past, there's no motion or anything that needs to go with this. It's more of just receive and file. You know, these last few years have been a little, little funky in terms of everything. But we have included, you know, everything that we can do. So we do have the master plan review, all of our meetings, all of our projects that you've seen and all the staff and PC training that we have.
Thank you. We appreciate the update. Any questions?
I felt like I had no professional trainings and I will endeavor to do better in 2023 now that they exist again.
I've been bad, too.
I feel like I need to keep up with Ms. Hasko.
Yeah.
She provided quite the extensive list, so we will look to her when she returns for her guidance.
I kept going, 2018, 19.
All right, well, next, we would love an introduction to our new CED director, Mr. Roger Caruso. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Nice to meet everybody for the first time. So I'll just give a brief introduction. I'm from Ferndale originally, so I grew up here. I went to Hazel Park Schools, so I think that's good. I interned here for a previous city manager, Tom Barwin, in 2004. And so I was one of his interns in the city manager's office. In 2005, I received a degree in urban and regional planning for Michigan State. And then Michigan really wasn't hiring then, so I went to Colorado. So I worked for two counties there, a very rural county, about 50 minutes north of Denver, called Weld County, twice the size of Delaware, very big. And, and then Adams County. But I settled in Lafayette, Colorado. Lafayette is nine miles east of Boulder, 12 miles north of Denver. Very, very progressive. Boulder's very progressive, Denver's really progressive. So a lot of similarities between Lafayette and Ferndale. Denver's really progressive, so a lot of similarities between Lafayette and Ferndale. So I'm trying...
Parking issues?
They had parking issues. We did, yeah. Parking issues.
Sorry.
No?
Parking and housing, man.
We did, but we keep...
We all have parking issues.
We did. We had, as the downtown redeveloped, there were people who believed we had parking issues. And yes, if you were used to parking right in front of the door, and you had to now park 50 feet away, there was a parking problem. But for the average person, they would say no. So we got pushed to build a parking garage. We had a one-mile-long downtown. It was, it started off as a mining community, so very small buildings. And so we couldn't afford it, or it wouldn't be used. I mean, people would walk one block, and that's about it. So what we did is came up with a program to actually go to each business owner, because we had the parking. Just everybody locked it up and wouldn't let anyone else park there. So we came up with some agreements. The first person went to the first key place, and we asked to lease their parking lot, open it to the public. We took over liability and snow removal, and we improved the parking lot. A lot of the parking lots, you know, owners don't have money to invest in that. There's other things to invest in. And so we had a lot of just really bad parking lots. And so the first one was really difficult, but as we did the first one, we went to the second business owner and said, that person does it, it's not so bad. And then a third one, and a fourth one, and a fifth one, and a sixth one. So we took over liability, which is really no cost to us. We took over snow removal, which is a very small cost, you know, I think our contractors were six or 7,000 a year, 8,000 a year, for many parking lots. But we created the parking, we used the parking that was already in downtown versus scraping buildings, taking on maintenance, et cetera. So they were happy, we were happy. We also had a couple of parking lots I thought was interesting that were actually in good shape, and so we would give the owner a stipend to facade, do facade improvements. So we won both ways on one of those agreements. So yes, we had parking problems. I'm trying to be...
Do you need to do an M1 parking? Sorry.
Oh, you're good. You're good. I'm trying to be methodical. My first day, I was thrown into meetings and...
Local meeting, right?
Council meeting first day, BZA second day, facilities tour third day. So it's moving rapidly, but now I'm getting a little bit of a foothold on meetings and teams and virtual and in-house. But I've tried to go through methodically to meet everybody, so I, my first two weeks are meeting all the CED employees, sitting down, going for coffee, finding out about them, what their goals are. My next one will be the department directors, so I'll be reaching out to each department director and take them to lunch and find out a little bit more. I did speak with Jordan today for about a half an hour before this meeting, so Jordan and I will meet up. I've started talking to CED directors in other cities, and so that'll come soon. But probably you'll receive an email from me next week asking to just jump on the call, jump on a phone call, have a conversation, see your history with the city and what we could do better. So we're trying to take it slow and methodical, so I thank you for being patient. Kyle and I, Kyle's doing an amazing job, but we both are new. And so we have a lot of things ahead of us. We will probably mess up on a couple of things, so please be patient with that, but we will try to get on board as quickly as possible and take it to the next level.
Thank you so much. Welcome back to Ferndale. We appreciate having you here.
Thank you.
I did have the pleasure of already meeting Roger, but I would like to do some introductions from the panel, if that'd be all right with you.
Sure.
You can kind of get a quick taste of, so Michelle Foster just started as chair, and I'll pass it off to Counsel. So, yeah, I think we already did. I will pass on my minutes to start down with Councilman Paprika.
We actually met before you were officially hired. Roger came on one of our Saturday tours of all the facilities in the city, so we spent a fair bit of time chatting, but I'm really glad to have you on board.
I think they were trying to scare me away with that facilities tour. It almost worked, actually, but we got here.
Yeah, I was worried that I was going to scare you away, you know, some whack job that sits on city council.
Super scary.
Oh, hi, Doug Brayson. I'm architect currently working at the city. I think we just did this, right?
Yeah, for me.
Fifteen, I meant here. Fifteen years, a resident for each, I don't remember what I said. Not native to Ferndale, but I'm here long enough, I think, at this point. Welcome, welcome, Ferndale.
Thank you.
Yeah, architect, licensed sure. I'm sorry, yes.
And yeah, I'm Rachel Akers, born in recent Ferndale, so a resident 30 years now living here. I'm a civil engineer. We're primarily environmental remediation. And I just joined this commission in May, early May, April. No, it's May now. So the last meeting that we had was my first official meeting, so I'm also new here. Glad to have...
Not the newest now.
More new people. Not the newest now, yeah, it didn't last very long, so yeah, welcome.
My name is Matt Showalter, registered practicing architect, do a lot of school work, been here for 10 years now with one year break in the middle, where I unfortunately had to move to Royal Oak for a year, moved back. And anyways, been on the commission, this is my second tour on the commission. We had about two or three years in the past, and I'm on my third year, I think, right now, so nice to have you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Oh, me, Kate Baker. I'm the immediate past chair, and I'm very, very excited to have Michelle in the middle seat now. But it means that I haven't met you, so I haven't had any pre-meetings with you guys. My husband's like, don't you have other meetings for Planning Commission? I'm like, not anymore. And I'm from here, too. Grew up in Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale, went to Ferndale High School, so probably graduated around the same time. The professional background is varied, but urban planner by education and training, and now affordable housing developer by day. Former council member and now planning commissioner for, I don't know, close to 15 years, since 2007, someone do that now. And I don't know when my term ends, so someone can tell me. So we can recruit new people, because I, you know, I think one of the...
That's in the indoor...
Oh, it's interesting, isn't it? It's in the annual report.
I think it says 2033 or something.
One of the, one of the really important things that I look forward to working on with our, with our new planning staff is really building our bench of commissioners. We have an amazing, you know, group of professionals up here who have expertise in the areas of the projects that are coming in front of us. So now having a civil engineer with an environmental focus on our, on our commission is like this great new addition, because we were pretty planner and architect-heavy for a little while. So like, where do we find the next land use attorney? Where do we find, you know, the next, well, we've got our transit guy now, but like, where's the, you know, the next economic developer? Well, there's these here. Commissioner Haskew has an economic development background, but really kind of building that bench and making sure that we've got some succession planning going, and a nice balance of people who've been here for a little while and have some of that historical knowledge, but also people who are, you know, excited in what's coming next and keeping things fresh.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because in my experience, I've had, you know, mentors who cultivate relationships. They go out looking for the next Planning Commission member, they have an eye on somebody, they let them know. And then I've had other people not invest and just put a, you know, notice on the counter, and you get anybody applying. So in my past, I'll usually work with the chair well in advance to say, you know, is there someone in the community who has a background, we need a lawyer, some other varied things. So that's good to hear. That's very good to hear.
Yeah, Commissioner Haskew's background is in economic development with the state of Michigan, and Commissioner Azar is also architect by training, longtime architect and project manager.
Last week, but again, Dustin Hagforce. I am the manager of planning for the smart bus system, so anytime you guys have transit-related questions about that, you most likely wound up talking to me about it. I do not want to move any bus shelters, because that was a question we got a lot. But I have lived in Ferndale for nine years now, started the planning commission during COVID. That was kind of one of my COVID projects, was to get on and start doing it. Previously, I had also been on the beautification commission, and I volunteered with the DDA Design Committee as well, so I've been, had my hands in different things within the city for a while.
Perfect. Well, thank you, everyone. Very welcoming. Everyone's been great. Everyone's helping me get acclimated, so I appreciate the welcoming hello.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
On to commission items. I want to start off by, since it was mentioned in our previous item there, in our annual report, there was the membership and term expiration detailed.
Yes.
And just so for everyone's awareness, Azar, Hagforce, Brayson, and myself, our terms expired last year, so we're fresh terms starting this year, and those are three-year terms.
Three-year terms, I believe, yes.
And then Showalter, Baker, Haskew. Are their terms expired at the end of 2023? Sorry, I got hauled up there because of Patrick is no longer on the commission. And I believe that mentions then everyone, so I believe then that Commissioner Akers would have taken Raga's seat so that the term would expire at the end of 2023, and that he could be re-adopted. Okay. Whatever the technical term for that is. So just wanted to mention that. Other than that, I did want to also mention everyone's responses in advance for your ability to join a June 1st meeting. We will dedicate that to our master plan update, and you should have all received drafts of the master plan. The steering committee did review the draft and provided comments to our consultant about a week or two weeks ago. We had a meeting, and the draft was well-received by the planning committee. The consultant, I believe, made edits to the draft prior to sending it to you, so some of those edits have already been made. And we look forward to reviewing that and getting everyone's feedback at our June 1st meeting. But then we'll go through the whole public process, as I mentioned earlier, with public hearings and whatnot, starting probably in July, I believe.
Yeah, consultants be here on June 1st?
Yes.
I received a text from Azar during the meeting that she would never have the package, so...
She told me that, too.
Good. Thank you for ceasing, because she didn't ever have the notice to begin.
Okay, thank you for that. We will apologize and make sure she is on future notifications. Any other commission items for this evening? We did talk quite a bit about the BZA already, but Commissioner Hagforce, any further review from last week's meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think overall, again, the conversation really, really played a lot on not only the functionality of the building, but also the idea of having industrial building right by the street. Would that be problematic? The only variance that was not granted to that project was the 15-foot setback for the parking. Initially, they were planning repaving it exactly how the parking is, which is currently right up to the street. But we kind of had that discussion and determined that that was a realistic variance that they could meet with the parking in the front, so that was the only variance that was not approved. So when they do come back to any kind of review, that 15 feet should be met. I also did kind of drop them a planning commission kind of tidbit on, again, like we had kind discussed here, if you do indeed want to try to improve the interaction between the residential and the industrial, really buffering, buffing up the landscaping along that way would go a long way for us, and that's also where the 15 feet came in. They were trying to kind of hang their hat on, you know, well, what if we did this, when it's like, 15 feet is realistic, do you want to hinder the whole project on what ultimately could be like three feet of a difference? So I think when they come back, it'll look very dynamic from what we saw previously.
It's like the depth of a parking space.
Well, I'd even suggest, I mean, I'm not a parking engineer, but I didn't even give them that preface, but based on their sizing and based on the fact that they were overparked even for a project that even the square footage was there for the parking spaces when they talked about employees and whatnot, it wasn't necessarily required. Even if they changed that first row that was perpendicular parking and just made them parallel spots, that would give them 15 feet, while still giving them plenty of parking spaces that they won't even need to take for a parking variance. So I'm hoping that they kind of take that guidance and run with it to really just make a very easy project to approve.
Yeah. Any other commission items? Well, we'll see you all hopefully on June 1st, and I'll bring the May 18th Planning Commission meeting to an end.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.